I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Together, we will begin tonight with a word of prayer and then a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As is your custom, please bow with me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in the precious name of Jesus Christ, and we thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. And, Lord, at this time in spring, we're approaching this graduation season, Lord, where so many of our college graduates are walking across the stage, and high school seniors are moving toward graduation, going out into the world. We ask your blessing upon these young people, dear Father. You know their futures and their paths even though they don't. And, Lord, please give them wisdom as they go forward so that there'll be a credit to their family and to you. And, Lord, we also remind you that this month is Older Americans Month, and we just thank you for our older Americans and the wisdom that they have to share with all of us. Lord, you know all of our paths, and we just ask you to please guide us and direct us, knit us together as one, so that together we're stronger than we are individually. Bless the Commissioners this evening, so that as they consider these different matters before the Board, give them wisdom as well, Father, for the benefit of Onslow County. In all these things, we will be careful to give you the praise, honor, and the glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. David Cotton, would you lead us, please?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Board for coming tonight. We're honored to have Sheriff Hans Miller with us tonight. If you have not turned your cell phones off, please do so at this time. The Board affords two opportunities for the public to speak. The rules of procedure are written in the back next to the sign-in sheets. If you wish to speak, please sign up. There's two opportunities. The first is a three-minute opportunity, and you must confine your comments to an agenda item. Please list the agenda item on the form next to your name. The second time is for five minutes at the end of the meeting, and you can speak on any subject that the Board has authority over. When you sign up in the back, you will be called forward in the order in which you have signed the form. As you approach the podium, please make sure the clerk has your proper name and address. Make your remarks to the Board in their entiities. Please keep your remarks civil and speak to the Board, and no audience participation is required. We do this so people can speak freely. We ask that you do not applaud, nor boo, or make any gestures towards the speakers' comments. So please be civil in your remarks to the Board of Commissioners. The Board reserves the opportunity to reserve to any impromptu questions at Commissioner comments. At this time, I will ask for a motion to amend the agenda.
Motion to amend the agenda to include Item 6G, childcare subsidy.
Do I have a second to amending the agenda?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass as unanimously. Motion to adopt the agenda as adopted.
Some of...
Second?
Second.
All in favor of the adopted agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Pass as unanimously. Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Some of...
A second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass as unanimously. This brings us down to the first three-minute comment period. This is the segment where you must reserve your comments to agenda items. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone that has signed up for the three-minute?
We do, Madam Chair.
Very well. Proceed.
This is the first public comment period. In accordance with the Board's rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. All comments must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items on for this evening's meeting during this first public comment session. The first individual that signed up to speak is Ms. Susan Lynch of 204 Cantel Court, Jacksonville, North Carolina, speaking in regards to Item 6A. Ms. Lynch, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
My name is Susan Lynch. I live at 204 Cantel Court in Jacksonville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board tonight. I would like to direct my comments to the lease at 246 Georgetown Road. I currently serve as the Finance Officer at the Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency. And the intent that I have tonight is to explain what the impact of that lease would be on our agency. The Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency administers several programs, including the Community Services Block Grant, the daycare, Section 8 program, and the Supportive Services for Veterans Family Program. All of these are housed in the same building. Therefore, all of our costs are allocated to the programs according to their floor space. So the impact of the lease will vary by the program. So I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to explain to you the impact on each of the programs. This is going to vary from anywhere from program closure to personnel cuts and a reduction in client services. The most severe impact would be to our daycare program. Our daycare occupies 58% of our floor space, so with a $5,000 a month lease, they would have to bear a cost of $2,900 a month. That would amount to $34,800 a year. Currently, that represents 24% of our approved budget. But in today's climate, we're not exactly operating at our approved budget. We're under budget right now. And so therefore, it would represent 34% of our budget. That's a figure that the daycare can't sustain, and it would cause closure of our daycare Another program, CSBG, would also be affected. Their fiscal year begins on July 1st, 2016, which I think is the same as the county. But we've already had to get our budget submitted. It's not been approved yet. Our budget, of course, didn't include any rent. This was something we didn't foresee back in January. So therefore, there is no line item at all for rent for Onslow County for this CSBG program. Once we get approval for the budget that we've already submitted, then we would have to submit a budget amendment to try to get the rent in there. Now, historically, this takes about six months. Last year, our budget amended a budget, was approved in January. So the period from July to January, we would have actually no line item to even pay any rent. And since this is a reimbursement program, we also would not be able to receive reimbursement for that. So that we would have to bear that cost out of pocket. Again, this is something that the agency couldn't sustain.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lynch.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Ms. Katrina Lautermilke, 400 Riggs Road, Hubert, speaking in reference to Item 6A. Ms. Lautermilke, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow Commissioners. I'm Katrina Lautermilke, 400 Riggs Road, Hubert. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I was appointed by the Onslow Board of Commissioners to East Carolina Human Services in 2003, and I have proudly served for the last 13 years. Now, it is my responsibility to our County of Onslow to report back what I have seen this 13 years. This agency has diligently worked to help the citizens of Onslow County to better themselves, which enables them to remain in Onslow and buy their necessities from local businesses. This agency offers individuals a hand up, not a hand out. This agency helps individuals be able to get jobs. The childcare has a five-star rating, which is very hard to get. I have known all of you, except for Millionaire, for many, many years. I respect the difficult decisions you have to make, and the worst time to make them is election time. All my adult life, I've always tried to live by the golden rule, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." Just imagine a landlord sending me a letter saying, "Oh, your rent is going up $5,000 in less than three months." How in the world would you handle that? This is what happened to us. The only time you hear from this landlord is when there's an article in the paper the day of the meeting is to publicly discuss the situation. We have not had any other, you know, feedback. Our budget at East Carolina Human Services has to be approved at certain times a year, which has already been stated. And we would appreciate if we would have communication from County to agency instead of reading it in the newspaper. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katrina.
The next person that signed up to speak is Ms. Marsha Wright of 2 West Bayshore Boulevard, speaking in reference to Item 6A. Ms. Wright, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come again before you. The only thing I have to add to the two previous speakers are my comments about, again, just the timing and notification. At our last meeting, I remember having a conversation indicating that we were going to be able, you would revisit the last issue we had and add on the extension and so on, and that once you got your interim legal service company in place, they would then come up with a lease. We would be invited to talk with them, to talk about the terms of it, what the implications would be, and that was how I left it when I left here. And again, as other people are saying, that we have been in training, and I picked up the newspaper this morning to see that we were going to be visiting that issue this evening. As someone spoke about before, we have a situation where our grant funding, government funding, rather, for the programs we have is already in place. Those of you, you're running a county government, state government, city government, the federal government, this is all a process. Our funds and our budget have been allocated for months. They have gone off, been signed, have come back, waiting for the fiscal year to turn over. Asking for revisions and amendments takes a long time. It's a long process to do. And so whatever agreement we come to regarding this lease, that has to be taken into consideration. We have no way to get around that, nothing we can do about that. The concern we have, of course, are the programs that we offer, who's going to be impacted, and how long this process will take. And at the end of the day, when the dust settles, whatever we do to secure the funds to pay the rent for the building, and however long that goes on, that is going to require a reduction in services. It will require a reduction in the clients that we're able to serve, and it will also, very likely, we hope not, but possibly, end up having some people to join the unemployed ranks in North Carolina. So we would ask that we at least be allowed to sit down, talk about the terms of this lease, whatever they might be, we'll hear about them, I'm sure, fairly soon, and discuss this, and end up with an agreement that is suitable for all parties concerned, and that we at least, after having been in the county for over 50 years, have some input in. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Shirley J. Bryan of 111 Viola Court, Swansboro, speaking in reference to Item 6A. Ms. Bryan, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
My name is Shirley Bryan, Swansboro, North Carolina. I've been there since 1984. I've been in Onslow County since 1977, gainfully employed, and hopefully doing some service to this community. I was at your last meeting, and I was somewhat surprised at the discussion of the way the Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency Incorporated was handled. This boy discussed that your perception of what you put out there was doing business, but I don't think so. As I watched and listened to your demeanor, as you addressed the speakers and the citizens present in the audience, neither there nor the agencies deserved the decency of prior conversation or communication and notification of why they are having to move now. Obviously, there had to be some discussion with someone for you to have the feedback that you shared from others with the audience as related to your comments. Perhaps elected officials do not have to do business as everyone else do. Prior discussion and notification always make officials make good relationship and communication when doing business, and that I didn't hear nor see, even in reading the paper and looking at the television report of this situation. I have researched without success many questions which will relate to good relationship and communication. Questions I could not find answers to include, "Why is it necessary to move folks around now?" Two, budget is discussed tonight. I also want to know, "Why is it that certain departments, Sheriff Department and others, get pretty much what they want without any money being shortcoming? If the space that the Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency Incorporated is presently occupied, so is presently occupied, so needed for other operation, why is it for lease So can you require a lease for one of your own agencies? Again, why now? If you're going to put one of your agencies in there, I don't think you're going to charge them any lease. If so, oh, well. What has been the economic impact on the county since the inception of the organization? I am talking about money generated. If they don't generate any money, then, oh, well.
Ms. Bryan, I'm sorry, your time...
That's all right.
Thank you so much for your comments.
The next individual that signed up during the first public comment period is Johnny Shiver of 1731 Pony Farm Road, speaking in reference to Item 6A. Mr. Shiver, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Thank you. I just have a few comments I'd like to make, and I've been watching the news and reading the newspaper. I've lived here all my life. I came here when I was six years old, right here in Onslow County, from just over the line to Jones County. I've attended all the schools in Onslow County, and I've been fortunate enough to have several businesses since I've been here, as well as a state job that I retired from. I really never knew that Onslow County was giving free rent or a dollar a year to any organization in the county that was federally funded, state-funded, and whatever. If I had, my little business is a nonprofit, and I would sure love to have a little lot somewhere, and just a small building to do my car dealership stuff. But I never knew that they had that. And I think it's time that the Commissioners do their job like they're planning to do, and I only think, I think it's only right for the people that's using the building to pay the rent. And if not, then I think we should have a lot of people able to get non, you know, have to have a building that don't pay rent and have that kind of advantage. I am the self-appointed mayor of Pony Farm Road, but that's no salary involved in that and no power. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that I'm in 100% agreement with you charging rent until these folks can find them another place. And I understand there's about, what, 15 Board members in that organization? Maybe they need to cut back on some of the Board members. Anyway, that's my story, and I just wanted to let you know how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shivers.
Madam Chair, that's the last individual that signed up for the first public comment period.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. At this time, I'll ask the County Manager to proceed through the agenda with Item 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 4 is Presentations. There are three proclamations that have been prepared this evening. The first is Older Americans Month 2016. At this time, I'll read the proclamation to the record. Whereas older Americans have fortified our country and shaped our world, making groundbreaking discoveries, pioneered new industries, and strengthened communities; and whereas during Older Americans Month, we show our support and appreciation for those individuals who, with decades of experience and unyielding enthusiasm, continue to lift up our neighborhoods, offer perspectives on pressing challenges, and serve as role models to future generations; and whereas this year's theme for Older Americans Month is Blaze a Trail, acknowledging that older adults, as well as those working with and for them, who are leading, supporting, engaging, and trailblazing in countless areas of life, from the creative arts to abuse prevention. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the month of May as Older Americans Month in Onslow County, and urges all citizens to pay tribute to our parents, grandparents, friends, neighbors, and every senior near to our hearts, and further urges citizens to take advantage of the many resources our community has to offer. Present the 16th day of May 2016. Representatives of Onslow County Senior Services will accept the proclamation. The chairman requests Commissioner Jarman present the proclamation. Commissioner Jarman?
It's a pleasure to stand here with y'all tonight and talk about the senior citizens. I'll be one one day. But, you know, I go back a long ways with senior citizens when we're here behind downtown on Ann Street and a little building down there. And when we bought the building out on 258, people says, "No, no, no, that's the worst mistake you've ever made. You couldn't do it, nobody won't come out there." Mr. Moore, gentlemen, was the director, which was a fine director. Well, Mr. Moore retired. Everybody says we won't never have another director that can carry it on, but I would like to say they've not missed a beat. And I went by there Wednesday, went through the lot Wednesday, and I said, "Well, when are we going to have to build more parking spaces?" It was literally, the lot was full. So evidently, they came from somewhere, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
You want to say something, Mary?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. The citizens of Onslow County, the senior citizens, and our senior services program and staff members are very grateful for this board and all of what you guys have done to ensure that the citizens, the senior citizens of this county have, and their needs are being met through the programs that are possible with you guys' assistance. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have something to say? Thank you.
Let's give my hand.
The second proclamation is for Foster Care Month 2016. This time, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas nearly a half million children and youth are in foster care in America, all entering the system through no fault of their own; and whereas children and youth in foster care deserve the happiness and joy every child should experience through family life in a safe, loving home; and whereas families provide children with unconditional love, stability, trust, and the support to grow into healthy, productive adults; and whereas as a community, we all have a responsibility to remain persistent in the charge to provide the best care possible for children when they cannot remain in their own homes. During Foster Care Month, we recognize the efforts of foster families, social workers, faith-based, and community organizations, and others that are improving the lives of young people in foster care across Onslow County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners invites all the citizens to observe this month by taking active role in activities across our county that recognize not only these cherished children and youth, but also the commitment of so many that touch their lives at a most challenging time. Present the 16th day of May 2016. Representatives of Onslow County Social Services will accept the proclamation. The chairman requests that Commissioner Williams present the proclamation. Commissioner Williams?
How are you both? Good. I did a little research, so I'm going to read my love notes here as I speak to the audience. The history of National Foster Care Month. Throughout its 100-year history, the Children's Bureau has worked to assist children and youth in the foster care. What I learned from my notes here and Googling everything that I need to find out, before the creation of the Children's Bureau in 1912, child welfare and foster care were mainly in the hands of private and religious organizations. In 1923, the Children's Bureau published the Foster Home Care for Dependent Children, an acknowledgement of the growing preference for foster care over institutionalized care. And one thing that I learned as well, during World War II, when more than 8,000 children were evacuated from Europe to the United States, the Children's Bureau oversaw their temporary placement in U.S. foster homes. And I know when I moved here from Los Angeles 12 years ago, my husband and I met at the Guardian at Lydham program. And we actually had a child that we took into our home because he had aged out of the system. And so it's near and dear to my heart to know when children need a place to stay, and that there are foster care families that are out there in our communities that will pick up that responsibility so that they can have a safe haven and a safe environment, a place to go. And my husband and I have been the recipient of many children that we've helped in Onslow County. So I thank you for the work that you do here. And Heidi, please have a few words. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank the Commissioners for all the support they've been for our foster care, for our staff, for our agency, in trying to take care of the children. At this point, we have over 200 children in foster care. That's a lot of homes to try to keep up with, and a lot of children to try to keep up with. And we couldn't do it without your support. I'm not sure if Monique would like to say a few words. We do have a foster care appreciation picnic coming up this week, so we're going to be letting the foster parents know just exactly how much we appreciate them. We are in dire need of foster parents in Onslow County. How many homes do we have? We only have 21 homes. And remember, I said we have 200 kids. So if you find it in your heart, or you are interested in becoming a foster parent, please contact the Department of Social Services. Thank you.
Thank you again for what you both do and for what the department does. Thank you.
Let's give them a hand.
The third proclamation is for Emergency Medical Services Week. This time, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas each day, Americans rely on emergency medical services system to help them in their hour of greatest need, when accidents and illness strike unexpectedly... When accidents and illness strike unexpectedly, EMS personnel are the first on the scene, and their timely actions often make the difference between life and death. And whereas emergency medical technicians, paramedics, and first responders serve on the front lines of our healthcare and public health system, working with them are many others whose dedication makes the EMS system function, including emergency dispatchers, physicians, nurses, as well as colleagues in the fire service and law enforcement. And whereas the emergency medical services teams, whether they are career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the week of May 15 through May 21, 2016, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Onslow County, in honor of the men and women whose skills and knowledge keep our citizens safe. Present the 16th day of May 2016. Representatives of Onslow County Emergency Services will accept the proclamation. The chairman requests that Vice Chairman Buchanan present the proclamation. Vice Chairman.
It's always an honor for me to give this out. I do it almost every year, and I'm thankful for it. Somebody asked me the other day, "Paul, how long you been dealing with public safety, since 1969?" And WC goes beyond that farther than me, and then Jack is right alongside of me with all the public safety experience and knowledge that we have. But the emergency services people are the first line, first line to the public, and first line to us law enforcement officers when we need you in the field. And they've done so much for this community, and I've watched it grow since 1969 till present. And it's just amazing the work that they do, and I want to thank every one of you.
I'd like to thank the commissioners and the community for the recognition for Emergency Medical Services Week. It's very important for our folks just to have a thank you. They get out there from the first responders who respond from their home, the volunteer corps that we have throughout the county, our paid paramedics. It comes from a place, I'm sorry, it's very near and dear to me, and it comes from their heart. What they do is something that they do because they believe in it. It's not something that you can stay with if you don't. They believe in reaching out, they believe in helping the community, and they're there for you 24/7. So thank you again.
Thank you, Beth.
Good evening, everyone. One thing I would like to talk about since we are on EMS Week. Last week, we buried one of our own paramedics that died at his home, Mr. Antonio Benefield. And to tell you about him, you know, with this being EMS Week, Tony was the type of paramedic, he was a real paramedic. He gave it his all. And, you know, with EMS Week being here, I just also want to remember him as we leave out today. So thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes item four. Item five, public hearings. There are two public hearings scheduled during this meeting. For both public hearings, we'll follow our normal routine. First, we'll have a staff introduction by Planning and Development Director Ben Warren. Following that, I'll open a public hearing. We'll call first for any applicants or representatives of applicants that are available to make a statement during the public hearing. Then we'll open it up for public comments. After public comments, we'll close the public hearing. We'll ask that the applicants or members of the public, as well as, of course, Mr. Warren, remain after in the public hearing, because item three is commissioner discussion. Commissioners shall reserve any questions and any comments for that time. So commissioner discussion will commence, and then following commissioner discussion, the item will be available for commissioner action. And that will happen in both of those items. Item A is rezoning case, LREZ 2016-17. This time, I'll ask for Mr. Ben Warren to please give a brief staff introduction. Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Good evening, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. The rezoning case that we have for your consideration this evening is the rezoned property from RA Rural Agricultural to HB Highway Business. Property owner is Mr. Leon Whaley, and there are four properties included in the rezoning. Property 57-100.3, 57-102, 57-106.1, and 57-106.3, with a total rezoning area of approximately 1.72 acres. And during our staff evaluation of the site, there were no floodplain or wetland areas identified on any of the properties. And the property would be, have water service provided by Anwassa. They have a six-inch water line that currently runs along Richlands Highway. Sewer service would also be provided by Anwassa, and there's a 12-inch sewer force main that also runs along Richlands Highway. Fire service will be provided by Georgetown Volunteer Fire Department, which is literally right across the street from the rezoning site. And streets, as we look at Richlands Highway, which is the primary street network providing access to the rezoning site, the current average annual daily traffic count is approximately 25,000 vehicle trips per day, and Richlands Highway has a capacity of 30,000 to 40,000 vehicle trips per day. One thing to note about the rezoning itself is the rezoning site is directly in line with the intersection of Rose Town Fire Department Road and Richlands Highway. So if this were to move forward with some type of new development, there would be some considerations from NCDOT for intersection improvements or other improvements to take access to Richlands Highway. So we took a look at the vicinity map. You see the property is directly across the street from the Rose Town Fire Department Road. It's about a mile north of the intersection of Catherine Lake Road and Richlands Highway. The existing zoning in the area is primarily rural agricultural, but this intersection, kind of like the Rose Town, or excuse me, the Catherine Lake Road and Richlands Highway intersection, has begun developing over the last few years as a more established commercial node. So you see, we have some existing highway business already forming at that intersection. And directly across the street, we have the Handymart and the Witch Witch. And just to the north of the rezoning site, we have the existing Rose Town Plaza there as well. Here's our aerial view of the site. You see, the site itself right now is occupied with two residential structures. And here's a view of the rezoning site facing back towards the Handymart. You can see the Rose Town Fire Department there in the background, looking down Rose Town Fire Department Road. As we look at the district comparison, the RA zoning district is primarily intended for low-density, single-family residential developments and agricultural-type uses. There are a number of uses allowed in that zoning district that are non-residential in nature to really support the rural areas. As compared to the Highway Business District, it's primarily designed for retail and service-type uses along thoroughfares throughout the county. We have a number of uses there as well, about 175 different uses that are pretty intensive commercial-type uses. And looking at the land use map, the future land use map for this area includes the agricultural and forestry category. And really, how the rezoning stacks up to that, it is not a corresponding zoning district as recommended in the comprehensive plan. However, one thing about the comprehensive plan is there are two different areas that would apply to the rezoning. One would be the future land use map. As we just mentioned, it's not, Highway Business is not a corresponding zoning district. But as we talked about in our last rezoning on Richlands Highway, at the time the comprehensive plan was developed, going on nine years ago, there was no sewer infrastructure along Richlands Highway. And so many of these areas, these different intersections, were not considered for non-residential development because there was no availability of infrastructure to support that type of development. So staff is in the process of reevaluating the Richlands Highway corridor to bring back recommendations to the board for how that corridor might develop going forward, now that we do have sewer availability. The other area of the comprehensive plan that addresses the rezonings are the different policies for how certain areas of the county would develop. And one of the, or two of the policies, deal with the development of commercial nodes and commercial activity centers. And the proposed rezoning is consistent with those types of policies in the comprehensive plan. So we would consider the rezoning request to be consistent with the comprehensive plan in that regard. Additionally, as we saw on the vicinity map, we do have some existing highway business zoning in the area and a number of commercial uses at this intersection. So we would consider the rezoning to be reasonable based upon those existing land uses and zoning. And as a result of the consistency with those comprehensive plan policies and the existing land uses and zoning in the area, staff would recommend approval of the rezoning request. The planning board has heard this request as well and made a unanimous recommendation based upon those same findings. And if the planning board...
Once again, if any member of the audience would like to speak regarding this rezoning case, please come forward at this time. With no one signed up and no one coming forward at this time, the public hearing is hereby closed. Madam Chair, this item is available for commissioner discussion and possible action.
Okay.
No, I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Can we have any discussion? Any comments for the applicant or either Mr. Warren? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item B, text amendment, LTXA 2015-5. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Warren to please come forward, give a staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. The text amendment that we have for your consideration this evening is basically an overhaul of our existing minimum housing ordinance. The minimum housing ordinance has been in place for several years, and staff began taking a look at it about four or five months ago. There were some issues with the enforceability of the ordinance, some confusion, and some really gray areas in the ordinance that were difficult for interpretation for both citizens as well as staff. As the staff began working with legal staff to develop some changes to the ordinance that really provided additional clarification, and also to make sure that everything in the ordinance was consistent with the North Carolina general statutes. We went through the ordinance and basically pulled it apart and put it back together. And the version that you have for your consideration this evening, there's really no changes as far as what the standards or what the requirements of the ordinance are. It's more so changing the format so that it's easier to reformat. It falls in line with the enforcement process, kind of from start to finish, so it's easy to follow for anyone that would be using the ordinance. And it provides additional, I guess it expands on definitions and procedures so that everyone really understands what responsibilities are. The real change that is recommended in the proposed draft versus the existing ordinance would be the Board of Appeals. Right now, we have a standalone Housing Board of Appeals. Due to the number of appeal cases we have, which in my four and a half years, we haven't had a single case, we have basically an organizational meeting once a year. And I know we have some volunteers on that board that could probably be used in a much more needed capacity with some of our other boards. And so our recommendation through the ordinance would be to take those responsibilities and basically place those on the Board of Adjustment. And that's something that would be allowed by statute to hear those types of appeals. And that's really the only significant change that's recommended in the proposed draft of the minimum housing ordinance. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions after the public hearing that you might have.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. This time, I'll open the public hearing. And actually, a correction to what I may have mentioned earlier, as this is a staff-introduced text amendment, there will not be an applicant, so I'll move straight to the public. There are no individuals that have signed up on the sheet in the back for the text amendment, LTXA 2015-5. So I'll make a call to the audience if any member of the audience would like to speak regarding this text amendment. And for clarity, the screen that is being shown right now is from the last public hearing, so I'll ask that that be removed. That's not relevant to this agenda item. If you would like to please come forward, text amendment, LTXA 2015-5. At this time, you may come forward, members of the audience. Once again, a second call if anyone would like to speak regarding this text amendment. With no one having signed up and no members of the audience coming forward, the public hearing is hereby closed. This item is available for commissioner discussion and possible action.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the board? A second on the, I have a motion and a second discussion.
I have a question. For Mr. Warren, how many cases did you say we had in the last four years?
Mr. Wright, we have cases regularly that we use, or we handle through the enforcement of the ordinance, but as far as appeals from staff determinations, we have had zero.
Now, this applies to homes that are rented or people live in them, occupied? It don't apply to abandoned homes or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything further for Mr. Warren? Okay. If there are no further questions, all in favor of the text amendment change, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, that concludes item five. Moving to item six, general items. Item A, lease for 246 Georgetown Road. This lease has been provided to the county commissioners. With us this evening is Mr. J. Thomas Neville, attorney from the firm of Yarborough, Winters and Neville, and he will be here to present the general terms of the lease to the board for your consideration.
Very well. Mr. Neville.
The lease is tab six in the package. The lease provides that Onslow County is a less sore and eastern townhouse, and Joyce Agency Corporation Corporation is a less see. The property being leased is 246 Georgetown Road, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28541. It's comprised of a metal building of approximately 6,000 square feet. The proposed term would begin July the 1st, 2016, and would end on October the 31st, 2016. There's no option to extend or renew the lease, included in the drafted lease. There's no notice of termination is required. Also, there is a provision, the less see could terminate the lease without penalty upon seven days' notice. The rent is $5,000 per month. The use provides for a nonprofit business. Use commensurate with the pursuit of public purposes. Other than that, the lease is fairly generic or straightforward. But certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Thomas, you saw or heard some of the questions that were presented about the legality of the amount. Could you address what the board's legal obligation as far as a rent less than fair market value?
Yes, ma'am. There are a few statutes on point, not very many really. The primary statute is 168-272, 272, which provides for the leasing or rental of property by the county. And the first requirement before the county could lease this subject property would be that the county would not need the property. So the county would have to determine that there's not a need for the property before the county could actually lease the property. So that would be the first requirement. So that would be the first requirement. If the county made that determination and then determined to rent the property, there's not a specific statute on point as to how you arrive at the rent, but the guiding principles that property is rented for fair market value. There are some instances where counties are allowed to rent below the fair market value. And this really isn't a statute so much as case law. And, but it follows the statutes more closely related to the selling of property by the county. And under those statutes, there are a number of prerequisites that the county would have to first find. One would be that the use would be for a public purpose. That the county is authorized to appropriate funds to that entity for that purpose. That it would be a nonprofit. And that the county is required to attach conditions to the lease which assure that the property will be used for a public purpose by that entity. And my understanding is then it is normally a, if all these prerequisites are met, if all the blocks are checked, then you would want a connection between a reduction in rent as to the actual appropriations that could be made by the county. In other words, I don't believe it would be property to just arbitrarily name a number. You would have to have some connection as to why you reduce the rent and what is, how the county benefited from the nonprofit providing the service that the county normally would have provided. And then there should be some connection with that reduction. But first, you must determine that the county does not need the property.
Okay. I'm going to just ask if I've understood you clearly. So the first thing we have to reach a decision on is whether we need the property. And I think that's been well established, both at the previous meeting and in the print. The second aspect that you just answered, the amount that we would have the authority to reduce the rent, if I understood you correctly, it would be that that is how much the county is saving or in direct coalition with the amount that the county is saving by this entity providing the service that the county's not having to provide? Is that close to accurate?
That's a fairly, that's a fair way to state it.
Okay.
Kind of, what is the benefit that the county derives from the county not providing that service? So again, it has to be a public purpose, has to be something the county be authorized to expand funds upon.
So it would have to relieve the burden of the county from providing that service. It would be a mandate that the county would be provided to, it couldn't just be a service to the citizens that the county is not required to provide.
Well, it must have a public purpose.
A public purpose. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Yep. The part of this lease agreement that we have, this is just the part-
Part of the commissioners, what we vote on tonight is we're deciding that we do, that we're presenting a lease. And in that lease has stipulations. And in the stipulations, it has an amount of rent for a fair market value for the property and the space determined by a real estate appraiser. So the other half of the equation is the people that's leasing the property. They would have to come to the county and negotiate the, or sign the agreement in order for it to become a lease agreement. It wouldn't be a lease agreement until it's signed by both parties.
Yes, sir. It would require both parties to enter into the agreement. So it would require the signature or execution by both parties. So if the county, if the commissioners were to approve this lease as written, then there would be no negotiation. It would be a matter of whether the last E, the EC, I'm sorry, ECHS, I believe, ECHSA, whether they, you know, determine that they want to then enter into the lease. Have to be executed by both parties, yes, sir.
So if they don't execute their part of the lease, then we have to come back to the table again? Or what do we do at that point?
Well, right now, my understanding is it's a month-to-month lease. That there is, in essence, no lease in effect right now. There's a month-to-month. So if ECHSA determine not to execute this lease, if the commissioners approved it, then the commissioners could move forward with eviction. Or the commissioners, you can take whatever action you want to. If you determine to draft another lease, then that lease would have to be presented. My understanding, all that's before the board this evening is the approval of this lease.
Okay. Any further questions for the legal aspect of this lease? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adopt the lease as written? A motion to adopt the lease?
A motion to adopt the lease as written.
May I have a second? All in favor of presenting the adopted lease as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Item B is Crisis Solutions Initiative. Presenting this is Ms. Beth Himes, EMS Division Chief. Chief Himes, please come forward and present this item to the board.
Good evening, commissioners. The Division of EMS currently transports behavioral health patients to crisis center. This is done in an attempt to get the patients to the appropriate local resources and to decrease visits in the emergency room. Currently, these transports and/or the scene visits that we do are not reimbursed or billed for. The Crisis Solution Initiative through the state of North Carolina has received a grant to aid in the funding to reimburse for these transports and/or scene visits. The primary counties who are eligible are counties with community paramedic programs or counties with an existing alternate facility transport policy or protocol. Onslow County qualifies as one of these counties. The funds are shared among qualifying counties and are managed through our managed care organizations. For Onslow County EMS, that would be Trillium Health Resources. We would submit for reimbursement through that agency. The funding is allotted for a grant period ending June 30th of 2016. The rates for reimbursement for basic life support, non-emergency transports will be $211. And that's what these transports would qualify as, or non-emergency transports. And the BLS treat no transports where we make the on-scene visits would be reimbursed at a rate of $164. So we respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners allow the county manager to be authorized to sign the contract permitting participation in the Crisis Solutions Initiative program and accept the rates stated in the program for transport and/or scene visits specific to behavioral health patients.
Thank you, Bill. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
Thank.
Any discussion? Any questions for Bill? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item C, delegation of duties to the Health Director. Director Angela Lee will present this item to the board. Director Lee?
Evening, Madam Chair, commissioners, Mr. Hudson. This evening, I have two policies for your review. The delegation of duties to the Health Director policy allows the Health Director to conduct agency business, provide oversight to the agency, and also work in authority to establish relationships and collaborations that directly strengthen public health. I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the delegation of duties to the Health Director policy. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
The board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Continue, Angela.
Director Lee, will you continue with item D, please? Appeals Procedure Policy?
Yes. Just for your information, every year, the Health Department during the fourth quarter has to annually review all of their policies. So that's why we're reviewing these tonight. Certain actions taken by the local Health Director concerning the enforcement of rules adopted by the Board of Health or Board of County Commissioners are subject to appeal per General Statute 138-24. The Appeals Procedure Policy, which directly correlates with the Appeals Procedure process that's used by the Onslow County Health Department as well as the Board of County Commissioners, is outlined in General Statute 138-24. This policy also acts as a piece of accreditation evidence that we use in our agency for accreditation. I respectfully request approval of the Appeals Procedure Policy.
What's the board's pleasure? Second. Questions? Angela, these appeals, they're in compliance with the state regulations and what the state-
Yes, they are taken straight from the statute.
Straight from them?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Lee? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, Phase Three of the Four-Part Salary Study and Pay Plan Amendment. Dr. Megan Doyle will be presenting this item to the board. Dr. Doyle?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to present information about the fiscal year 2016 salary study, which would be Phase Three. As the commissioners have been briefed, and I think some of the public as well as some of our attendees this evening, I want to review a little bit of a history of our human capital and compensation and our studies that we've conducted over the last three years. In 2013, a committee was comprised of a number of our department heads as well as our deputy county manager to analyze our pay and classification study, our pay and classification system. At that time, that committee recommended that we have regular merit increases and opportunities for advancement through additional training and education. Those recommendations were received by the board very positively. However, at that time, we did not have the funds or the resources to fund all of that at one time. And so the board took a stance that we were going to take a measured approach and begin to analyze the salaries of employees over a period of time, which has been four years. At that time, when the study was presented to the Board of Commissioners, the salary scale and the difference between our market competitors was about 14%. So our process going forward over a three-year period now was to evaluate positions, beginning with the departments that have had average salaries that were the furthest from the market, reclassify those positions based on evaluations of the job requirements, working conditions and hazards, and education, and revise class descriptions for positions as needed and warranted, and then calculate the cost to the county to make those adjustments. And again, as we were looking at our departments and taking those furthest from the market early and then taking those that were closer to the market a little bit later, time has passed, and so all of our positions have kind of gotten further and further away from the market. We also did a market assessment and used our governmental competitors. We explained the last time that I presented that we're not, for example, with the Health Department last year, we didn't look directly at a competitor being the hospital, although a competitor for our nurses is the hospital. However, that's not a direct competitor for us because it's not a government service agency. And so we looked specifically at those agencies that closely match the jobs that our government has. And then we also looked at internal equity. In fiscal 2014, the commissioners approved a market adjustment for all of our positions to get us started and to try to reduce the stem of turnover that we had in significant numbers of our departments. Also, the commissioners took it upon themselves to make a living wage adjustment, which was to move those salaries for the people who are at the lowest end of our salary scale higher and to ensure that all of our employees in positions were making at least $10 an hour. That affected 65 positions. In addition, we had a situation in our E911 telecommunications center where our telecommunicators were directly competing with people in the room from another governmental agency that we shared space with. And so we had to make sure that those positions got up to market quickly because we were losing employees that we were training and providing great training to across the room and giving those employees away when they were a valuable resource for us. And finally, our first department that we addressed en masse was the Onslow County Sheriff's Office. And we corrected salaries only in the positive direction for that department. And we had 193 employees that received increases in their pay rates. Forty-five employees maintained their current rate of pay. And we've taken the position each time we've conducted studies that we're not going to hurt or affect anyone negatively. As you can see, the total cost in that first year was $3.9 million. So you can imagine what it would have been had we done everyone at the same time. In fiscal year 2015, the Board of Commissioners adopted the second phase of the salary study. During that year, we had the opportunity to analyze 10 different departments. These were most, some departments that had some of our smaller numbers of employees, with the exception of the Health Department, which was our largest department addressed in that salary study. During that fiscal year, the total cost was approximately $1.1 million. Again, 10 departments were studied, 248 employees were evaluated. And we completed that in May and implemented that salary adjustment retroactive to January of 2015. And we have done that each year where we've gone back and retroactively made adjustments based on our budget and based on the number of pay periods that we had left in the fiscal year. The cost, again, in that fiscal year was $502,000, but the total cost of those adjustments was 1.1. We also did a COLA at that time. The Board of Commissioners began to start seeing that our salaries were being stagnant and that for those that were not being studied, we wanted to provide some adjustment during the interim to ensure that our employees understood that we still valued them and valued the resource that they bring to our departments, but that we were going to get to some of those departments a little bit later. Finally, this year, we've had the opportunity to start the Phase Three salary study. The Board of Commissioners has already adopted the budget and as a result, adopted the cost of living adjustment that occurred back in July of 2015 for this current fiscal year. When we decided what department to address, we looked at turnover and the number of employees that we obviously had to address. And the largest turnover department that remained in our 12 departments that still remain for salary study was the Department of Social Services. 21.8% is the rate of turnover for the Department of Social Services in our overall turnover for Onslow County Government. So the Department of Social Services represents more than a fifth of our turnover annually at this point. 258 employees are addressed in this particular study, and they are 14.3% below market. I can tell you that in 2013, that number was a little bit lower. But again, we've had a significant amount of time that has passed since that time. After we implement this study, the Department of Social Services will be about 2.2% below market. So within our margin of error, which is plus or minus 5%. Just as an example of some of the positions that we've addressed with this particular study, an income maintenance caseworker, these are the employees who meet with our citizens on a regular basis that are in need of financial assistance and other human services programs. The income maintenance caseworker was 14.7% below the market. You can see that our entry level income maintenance caseworker was 11% below the market. So if we had someone who had the financial skills to serve in that position, and this is a very specialized position, although it is one of our lower entry positions, we need employees in these positions that can review financial data, housing data, and really be almost investigators in some way to ensure that the information they're receiving from the citizens that are coming through the door is accurate so that they can make good estimates of the services and the benefits that we're going to provide to those citizens. After the study, these employees stand to be 1.96% from the market. Another one is the social worker and protective services. These are our child protective services and adult protective services social workers. You'll notice that this position wasn't as large away from the market. This is a position, however, that has a high rate of turnover as well. And the reason is because we lose a significant amount of our social workers and some of our income maintenance caseworkers to specifically New Hanover County. And it's to the point now where some of our social workers are willing to drive an hour, one way, each way, to get that higher salary, which means that that difference is pretty significant. So although our entire market for this position is about 9% to 10% off, that one county is a big source of our turnover. After the study, that will be about point within- After the study, that will be about point, within 1 percent of the market. So, the Phase III salary study, we, the Commissioners budgeted $1 million for the mid-year implementation, which would include the remaining balance from the fiscal year 15 study as well as $500,000 for this year's study, which again is DSS. The $650,000 COLA was already implemented, and those employees are benefiting from that, and that occurred on July 1st of 2015. Again, we're addressing the Department of Social Services, 250 employees. Again, this is another kind of significant number. 94 percent will see an increase in pay, which means to us that a significant portion of those employees have been well below the market for a long time. 6 percent will see no change, again, going with our tradition of not affecting people's pay in any negative way. So, the cost total would be 1.3, almost $1.4 million plus the COLA, again, going with our implementation sometime during the year so that the budgeted amount for the Board of Commissioners represents what was initially indicated, which was $500,000. That means that we will make this pay increase effective with the February 26th pay period. That's the date that that pay period ended, and that will mean that the cost in this fiscal year is $483,101. And I have, I will take any more questions. Also, one other thing is, as a result of the salary study, positions were reclassified, and there's a list of reclassified positions, the current and the new grades, that is also being requested to be approved as a part of the study. So, we're asking for the movement of those funds from our non-departmental into that department to pay for these salary increases as well as an adoption of the reclassifications as a result.
Do I have a motion from the Board?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Questions for Dr. Doyle?
I've got a couple. The 1.35, I mean, 1.395 million for the DSS study, can you tell us, we did the study in-house, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
So, a lot of people that called me read this, and they said, "Why did we spend that kind of money for a study?"
Oh, no, no, no.
It includes the salary, but that needs to be clarified.
Yes, 100 percent of the money is going to the salary increases. I'll take a bonus, but I'm not getting one in this.
In other words, what Jack was asking, we didn't pay anything for the study. You did the study, your HR side of the house.
Yes, Crystal Bennett and I have spent all of our time working on the study, and we have each year that we have implemented it. Yes, sir.
The way it was read, was, way it was read or wrote in the, it said, "The total annual cost to the county for the DSS salary study would be 1.395," and that was the cause I was getting. They want to know why we spent that kind of money for a site. They said, "Why don't we just give a pay raise instead of do the study?"
And that's what we're doing. And so, this is not, we're not paying for anyone to study our salaries. We have done it ourselves. Yes, sir.
You good, Jack?
On the, on the charts, where we made the adjustments from one salary range to another, it would, it would be a lot clearer, I guess, if we'd have had, because that, you just gave a salary range from pay, I don't know, pay grade 69 to pay grade 72. It would have been, because we don't know, we know what the minimum and the maximum is for that particular pay grade. It would have been a little bit more clear to show what that person actually was getting instead of had to sit down with your calculator and calculate it out.
So, you want the range in there in addition to the grade?
Well, I just think it would be a lot clearer if we seen what the salary was for that person instead of the hourly rate. It was a minimum and a maximum hourly rate for that particular category or classification. It would have been a little clearer to me to see that, but that, that's something we can do later.
Let me clarify that for you, Commissioner. The reason we do that is there are some of our positions are salaried positions, but some of them are hourly, and some of our hourly employees work overtime.
I see.
And we've had some confusion with our own employees when we report a salary for them to think that that's going to be the total of what they're going to earn. And for a non-exempt employee, it's very important for them to understand that they earn that much per hour, and they're paid by the number of hours that they work. And so, that's why some of that is presented that way.
Okay. Look, that's clear to me, and I knew what it meant, but if somebody were to read that, they would say, "Well, that range, what is that person's range even though they went from step 69 to step 72 or category or class range?" A lot of people wouldn't have been able to determine exactly what that range was for that particular expertise in that area.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
That's all I have.
Paul, did you have some?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Megan, you know, I guess what I have is more of a statement than a question. We hear on the political scene on the national level about $15 minimum wage, and several candidates have stated that they're going to enforce a federal, on the federal level, minimum wage. We have just now got some of our employees to $10. What kind of impact do you think that this would have if federal government came out and said, "All employees are mandated to have a $15 minimum wage"?
Obviously, we'd have to do some calculations and figure out what salary grade would make that our minimum, and then calculate that based on the number of employees we have in those position classes. We're also looking right now at the projected or the suggested recommendations regarding exempt versus non-exempt, the changes to the Fair Labor Standards Act and what potential impact that will have on our budget. All of it is going to mean that we're going to have to pay more money for the services that we provide. And I think the Commissioners have tried to take a very measured approach in improving salaries over time that match the market and match the requirements of our employees to our local area and the cost of living and that type of thing. Any increase or mandated increase to a specific number, I don't know that it necessarily, if we're talking about $15 an hour in Jacksonville, North Carolina, matches what that wage is in San Francisco.
Sure.
So, obviously, it would be a significant cost, particularly for those positions that were at that level of the market.
Well, it's just important, I think, for everyone to recognize there are things that occur on the federal level that have a direct influence on us little peons down here in Onslow County. The best we can do is try to implement in some semblance of what we can afford to do and try to keep pace. So, if something like that were to occur, that it would certainly not devastate the county. If there's any further from the Board, all in favor of implementing the third phase of the salary analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Doyle.
Item F, Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina application. Ask Ms. Crystal Bennett, the Deputy Human Resources Director, to come forward and present this item to the Board. Ms. Bennett?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. Onslow County provides health insurance as a benefit to our employees. Currently, as a self-funded healthcare plan, we utilize the services of Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina as our third-party administrator, and they provide claims administration for our pharmacy and medical services and the ability to utilize their network of providers. Each fiscal year, we renew our application with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina. The documents that you have before you cover fiscal year 2016, 2017 and detail our administrative fee, the wellness programs offered, and how our benefit is administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina. This contract does not represent significant changes from the contract that was approved by the Board of Commissioners for fiscal year 2015, 2016. We have had this contract reviewed by legal counsel, and we respectfully request the Board of Commissioners to sign the group application for Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina as well as the program selection chart, ASO 100-199 for fiscal year 2016, 2017 healthcare coverage, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Crystal. For the Board's pleasure?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any questions for Ms. Bennett about healthcare? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Crystal. Passes unanimously.
Item G, childcare subsidy. Ms. Heidi Bauer, Director of Department of Social Services, will come forward to present this item to the Board. Director Bauer?
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Social Services is responsible for providing childcare subsidy to the citizens of Onslow County. The childcare subsidy program is funded through a combination of state and federal dollars, and it subsidizes quality childcare for working families. In 2014, the Department of Social Services and the county contracted with the Onslow County Partnership for Children for provision of the childcare subsidy program. This allowed families to access services at their first point of contact. This collaboration has been beneficial to the citizens, and the department desires to continue that contract with the department, with the Partnership for Children. The state grant cycle for this is from June 1st of 2016 through May 31st of 2017. The contract with the Partnership for Children is in an amount not to exceed $8,991,845. This is equal to the amount of state and federal dollars allocated to Onslow County, and there are no county dollars in this contract. I'm respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider and approve the contract and authorize the Chairman to sign the contract and associate documents on behalf of the county.
The Board's pleasure?
So moved.
Second. Heidi, just to make it perfectly clear, we're just a pass-through for these funds. No, we're not adding these funds out of property taxes or pass-through grants coming from state and federal.
Yes, ma'am, this is completely state and federal money. There are no county dollars at all.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that concludes Item Six. Item Seven, appointments. There's one appointment item this evening, consolidate Human Services Committee. On June 10th, 2013, the Board of County Commissioners adopted Resolution 13-10 in order to consolidate the provisions of social services and health department functions under county government pursuant to session law 2012-126, House Bill 438. In accordance with the requirements of HB 438, Resolution 13-10 also provides for the creation of a health advisory committee, membership of which is consistent with North Carolina Journal Statute 138-35. The 11 members, as established by North Carolina Journal Statute 138-35, shall reasonably reflect the population of Onslow County and include various categorical positions. Dr. Dante Martin, veterinarian category, resigned on December 5th, 2015, leaving a vacancy in that position. Staff has requested to move Dr. Gina Francis, who is currently in Seat Three, general category, to the veterinarian seat. Additionally, staff has received an application from Dr. Carl Cordoni, who has expressed an interest in Seat Number Three, general category. The applications are on file, have been certified by the Clerk's Office. The action requested is consider moving Dr. Gina Francis to the veterinarian category and appointing Dr. Carl Cordoni to Seat Three. Both seats are for a remaining three-year term expiring on November 18, 2017.
And second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. We had no items that were pulled from the consent agenda, so let's move to our second five-minute public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the second public comment period. In accordance with the Board's Rules of Procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. There are two individuals that have signed up to speak this evening. I believe the first is T. McCall of 503 DeWitt Street. I'm having trouble reading the name, I'm sorry. Is Mr. or Ms. McCall?
Anyone from DeWitt Street?
Ma'am, just for the record, could you please state your name, and I'll make sure we have it right?
Ms. Katrina McCall.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm here to speak concerning the lease at 246 Georgetown Road. I understand that's established community, long history, and I'm all for that. But as a person who wants work there, inside, it's toxic. I know that's not your jurisdiction, but the Board is somewhere appointed, and I would ask that you carefully examine before the Executive Director refer to you, more Board I thought today, when we go to school, we pay for monies to become a part of the economic, the local locality to improve economics. That's why you talk about jobs and workforce development and initiatives. Working there, I attempted that. It's personal. It's not about the people, and the common people are not being represented there. It's ran like it's out the back of a church, with all due respect. I was subjected to, I left, I resigned respectfully because of the toxicity in the environment, the bullying, the fear that lives each day in that building. People have been there too long, whether it's the Board, the Executive Director, whomever it is. I know you're here talking about a dollar rent. You have Section 8 there. They displace people all the time for a dollar rent if they don't like them, and will use whatever resources of this community to ensure that that happens. If you're not favored, and I just would like to plead to this Board to please examine before someone presents Board members that they're well-qualified, because those federal dollars and state dollars that you may not necessarily say yea or nay to, they got to reach the people that need them in this community. They already work for little. The job market is already limited to hospitality and already limited to restaurants and already limited to retail. Many of those people are giving back technically because that building would have been paid for. If you had have taken even $5,000 each month for every year, you'd be at about $900,000 and still have some monies left over. That's not calculating what you've paid for repairing that building when things fall apart or is damaged, the landscaping, the upkeep, a brand-new building. They're not that merciful to, and objective to people every day. Now, I understand there's a new regime where Section 8 come, there's a lot of money and monies, and I understand that all those monies aren't even said in the newspaper that reflects Section 8 in SSVF, but it's not for people to decide. Jobs, when people go for their, I walked in there to volunteer. I was interrogated and questioned. I appealed my unemployment because I know it was employer bullying, my EEOC complaint, my personal life. That is not what we use our local dollars for, with all due respect. I don't think that's why you all went to school, to be here, to represent. That's not what democracy of this country is about, and you have people who are not qualified, with all due respect. No, I'm not the brightest thing in the bunch, but God knows, if I got to go into work every day and worry about, "I'm in a war zone" because people can't talk to one another, and the Board hasn't done their fiduciary duty to hold them responsible. That's what I want to say as a citizen of this county, as a citizen of this Onslow County, Jacksonville. I've never seen a nonprofit function, and they're at the level in dollars at a national level, and they cry about a dollar. What about those families that get ported in and nobody represents them because paperwork gets misplaced? What about when you don't want to bother with someone else because people don't care enough? They say they care. Most people are afraid to speak what their mind, their mind is, with all due respect, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
The next person that signed up to speak is Ms. Katrina Lautermilk of 400 Riggs Road, Hubert. Ms. Lautermilk, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening again. I would like to ask that you give East Carolina Human Services reasonable time to get this line item approved as an amendment line item to our budget. line item approved as an amendment, line item to our budget. You know, working with the government, it's a lot of red tape, takes a long time to do that. I also want to repeat that we would really appreciate communication between Leeser and Leesee. This is just being respectful. Also, I would like to make it clear that all of our board members are volunteers. We don't get paid to go sit on the board, like it was kind of assimilated before. Please give us the decency to be able to work together to solve this situation. This happened years before, years ago, before we were, y'all were on the board, and before we were with East Carolina Human Services. So, let's solve this together, and we both will win. Thank you in advance for your help and understanding in this matter. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's the last person that signed up for the second public comment period.
Was there someone named about trying to sign up? Okay. If there's no one further to speak on public comment, then we'll move to Manager's comments. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. I'm glad that Norman Bryson mentioned our paramedic, Tony Benefield, earlier. I did want to draw attention to the fact that, that he passed away. Also, today was the funeral of Ms. Nancy Ripley. Nancy Ripley served in emergency services, and she served there while I was here the first time, working for Onslow County, and we went through several hurricanes. Ms. Ripley, just like Mr. Benefield, was a credit to the department, and we're sorry to have had those losses recently. Also, I would like to just correct a little bit of information separately, moving to a different topic. On Sunday, May 15th, 2016, the Jacksonville Daily News had an article in the paper referencing local government budgets, and there was a statement in there that I would just like to clarify. The statement was, "Jeff Hudson has no plans to present the budget," meaning to the Board of Commissioners, "before the June 1 deadline." It is a different thing to say, "Jeff Hudson has no plans to present," versus, "We're still working on it." The Holly Ridge budget is quoted at $2.3 million. The Jacksonville General Fund budget is quoted at $47 million. And I worked in Holly Ridge as a town manager, and back then it was $700,000, so it has grown over time. But our General Fund budget in Onslow County Government's $195 million. We're four times the city of Jacksonville, and the General Fund alone, not counting enterprise funds. Besides that, we are in an extremely difficult budget season, and it was only, I believe, Wednesday of last week that we received an amended budget request from Coastal Carolina Community College. So, every day, we're working on the budget, the actions that the board took this evening relative to Phase III of the salary study, now that you have taken that action, that will now tomorrow be incorporated into next year's budget. So, just for clarity, if, if any person that might have read the news article thought that, "I'm withholding a budget," no, the, all the staff and finance and HR will attest, they are still working hard on it. And we will have it printed, and we will make the June 1 deadline of presenting it to the Board of Commissioners, but it won't because we have a lot of days to spare. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board.
And we're confident that you can whip that out in a day or two. Commissioners' comments. Mr. Bright, let's start with you tonight.
I don't have too much. I thank all the people that came out tonight and spoke, and we had a good meeting. I'd like to see all the people that show up to the meeting like this, show up every time, because I think citizen input is very important and critical to our decisions that we make, and it's good to have everybody that came and spoke tonight. I think everybody had value, and I appreciate you being here. Other than that, have a safe trip home.
Thank you. Mr. Jarman?
Yeah, I'll have it.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank each of you for showing your support on the matters in which you have positions that you represented, the different areas here in the community. Also, I'd like to thank the citizens that came forth and shared your comments, your We heard you, and, and I'm glad citizens are here to speak on both sides of a concern, because in life, perspectives are good to hear both sides of a coin, as far as I'm concerned. And I certainly wanted to speak to the fact that someone made the comment in referencing the Sheriff's Department in reference to the nonprofit organization. And I will clearly state, as I stated in the commercial, I stand behind what I say, behind doors, in front of doors, and on side doors. Any of you that know me, I stand very firm, and I can stand behind my positions that I take as a county commissioner. I do my research, I take in consideration what is mandated before us. And the Sheriff's Department, we, as county commissioners, are responsible, not only are we responsible, but we are mandated by the state to fund the Sheriff's Department. Is that not correct, Sheriff?
Correct.
Okay. So, what citizens have to understand, and I know when things are near and dear and close to your heart, it's very hard to step outside of that box, because you're attached to it emotionally, and I get that. However, the county has a business to run. This is a business, and we're responsible for how we spend taxpayer dollars. These are not millions of dollars up here, by no means. If it was, I'd truly be the millionaire that that name states, but that's not the case. We're responsible for 200,000 citizens in Onslow County, and we have to look at everything from a very clear perspective with data to be presented. And it's very difficult to sit up here to make decisions sometimes that you know people are opposing, they don't agree with, but again, I rest my case, this is a business, citizens. Please understand that. We have a business to run, and we're responsible for these dollars. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair?
I want to thank everybody for being here. I had an opportunity Friday, the mayor from Holly Ridge invited myself, Topsil Beach, North Topsil and Topsil Beach, to go down to Morris Landing, and had no idea where Morris Landing was, but I do know where it's at today. But it's a living shoreline, and if you had an opportunity, it's one of those things that it's really scientifically developed, when, that's where all these oyster shells go. And what's interesting there is they have a pier that's made out of concrete that all the barges come in and pick up all the shells off of eastern North Carolina and put them in a stump sound, a lot of them in stump sound, and some of them go north and some go south on these barges. But this living shoreline was amazing. I mean, it's another one of those jewels of Onslow County I didn't know existed. And if you ever want it, it's on Sound Drive, all the way down to the water, and you can't miss it. It's an actual living shoreline, and what it does is it actually helps the fish, the crabs, and the grass, the seagrass. It's pretty interesting to see that, when the scientist that was with us on Friday was amazing. But I wanted to share that with the people, because it's like Hammocks Beach State Park, a lot of people don't even know where that's at. And that's another jewel that we have in Onslow County. But this living shoreline was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you for going to that. I'm going to be very short and direct to the point. This topic of the lease, as far as I am concerned, the attorney has told us what is legal, the appraiser has told us what is fair, the county has told you that we need that space, and I know that many phone calls have been made from board members to individual commissioners trying to woo and sway and, and get sympathy. I'm not dealing in sympathy here. As far as I'm concerned, the lease agreement has been adopted, and it's in your lap. If you can comply with the lease agreement and it fits within your business model, then we may be able to talk between now and November, when you drop your checks off. But other than that, there's not a lot of room to negotiate with me. Thank you. Is there any further? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
[inaudible].
Set.